Welcome back to our Bible study session. We thank you for joining us today. We're going to study about the book of Genesis. Last week, we stopped at Genesis chapter one verse five. We spoke about the day one of creation. And today, we're going to continue on and start from verse six and talk about day two, day three, day four, and day five. So I'm going to cover as much as I can because there are more topics to cover before we close the series. Before we begin, why don't we look into the Lord in prayer? Ask Him for His grace and mercy as we study His Word. Father, we pray that You speak to us. So Lord, enrich us with Your Word. We pray that Master, that we will be filled with the knowledge of Your Word. We will be filled with the understanding that comes from Your Word. We pray, Lord, that through this session, we will get to know You more and will walk in a closer and an intimate relationship with You. Help us, God, we pray. In Your name, amen. Amen. So day one of creation, which is what we studied last week. And we're going to recap just a couple of things to remind us of what happened on day one. The day one of creation, according to the Bible, time, space, and matter came into existence. We saw the creation of light without sun. And the first day and night was created. And then finally, the earth starts rotating on its axis. That is what happens on day one. So keep this in mind because we're going to go into day two, day three, day four, and day five. And as you keep this in mind, it'll help you understand the sequence of events and how God created everything. Okay? So we're going to go into Genesis chapter one verse six and read up to verse eight. Genesis chapter one, verse six to eight. And Genesis chapter one, verse six to eight talks about day two of creation. So please turn your Bibles with me to Genesis chapter one, verse six to eight. I hope that, you know, as you're listening to the study, I hope you are with your notebooks, with your pens, ready to take down notes. I hope you are doing that. If there is no notebook in your hand, please find something. Because the more you take down notes, you'll engage better, you'll pay attention. And I highly request that since most of you are watching online today, please do not open WhatsApp in between or Facebook or any other apps, but rather just stay focused on the Word of God. Because we need to give the Word of God the reverence that it deserves. We need to understand that as we study the Word of God, we're studying about the God who created everything. And that God deserves the honor. So please don't use your devices at this time, but just stay focused on the Word. Genesis chapter one, verse six to eight. I'm going to read this for you, so please follow along. "And God said, Let there be an expanse in the midst of the waters, and let it separate the waters from the waters." Verse seven.[1463.50][1463.50]"And God made expanse and separated the waters that were under the expanse from the waters that were above the expanse, and it was sowed. And God called the expanse heaven; and there was evening, and there was morning, the second day." So Genesis chapter one, verse six to eight gives us an account of what happened on the second day. Second day. And one of the words that will stick out as you read these few verses is the word "expanse". Is the word "expanse". Now you may be wondering, what does "expanse" mean? Now, I want to read Genesis one, verse six from the New Living Translation. It'll give you an idea. Genesis one, six in the New Living Translation says like this. "Then God said, Let there be a space between the waters to separate the waters of the heaven from the waters of the earth." What did God say? Let there be a space. So when we're talking about an expanse, we're talking about a space that separates from one part of an object to another part of an object. So in other words, "expanse" also refers to a wide open land or space or even sky. So keep this in mind. "Expanse" refers to space. "Expanse" refers to space. Another word that is used instead of "expanse" in different translations is the word called "firmament". "Firmament". So the idea of firmament is that it's also again a space. It's also a space. Because in some translation that you're reading, you'll hear the word "firmament", and it may sound like a big word. But in fact, what it is, is that it denotes a space between the waters. So what's happening here? What is God doing here? What we see here is that in Genesis chapter one, verse six, God creates a space. So what you see right now is that you see a watery mass. Everything is full of water. And God creates a space between the water and separates the water from the water. Okay? Please follow along. God creates a space between the water, and He separates water from the water. What happens is that here, He is creating the sky. Now, when we go out in the night and look at the night sky, what do we see? We see these beautiful stars, moon. We see all sorts of... Sometimes we can spot some planets. We see, it looks beautiful. What God is doing here is that He's creating a space where He's creating a sky that we see today in the night sky. Okay? So if you think about it, the expanse here or the firmament here is like a crystal layer that separated the water on the earth to the water in the sky. I hope this explanation is clear. Separates the water from the earth to the water in the sky. That is what Genesis chapter one, verse six says. "Let there be an expanse; let there be a space in the midst of the waters, and let it separate the waters from the waters." What this means is that there is a water body on the earth that we see. We see the regular water bodies. We see our lakes, our rivers. We see all of that. There is one water body that is on the earth. Everything is full of water. And God creates a space between the water and separates the water from the water. Okay? Please follow along. God creates a space between the water, and He separates water from the water. What happens is that here, He is creating the sky. Now, when we go out in the night and look at the night sky, what do we see? We see these beautiful stars, moon. We see all sorts of... Sometimes we can spot some planets. We see, it looks beautiful. What God is doing here is that He's creating a space where He's creating a sky that we see today in the night sky. Okay? So, if you think about it, the expanse here or the firmament here is like a crystal layer that separated the water on the earth to the water in the sky. I hope this explanation is clear. Separates the water from the earth to the water in the sky. That is what Genesis, chapter one, verse six says. "Let there be an expanse, let there be a space in the midst of the waters, and let it separate the waters from the water." What this means is that there is a water body on the earth that we see. We see the regular water bodies. We see our lakes, our rivers. We see all of that. There is one water body that is on the earth. But also, there is a water body in the sky. And sometimes, we call that as an atmospheric water or a water vapor. So, there is a water on the land that we see and also a water in the sky. What God is doing here is that He's dividing the water into two separate parts, water on earth and water in the sky. I hope you followed me so far. I try to keep my explanations as simple as possible, but sometimes, it's hard to simplify it. If you do not understand this, please feel free to ask questions. Ask anything, any questions that you might have regarding the subject. It's an invisible layer of water. I'm gonna talk about more about that water now. Now, okay, for those of you who are online, Pradeep here is asking a question that, can we see that layer of water today? That's the question he's asking. Now, I'm gonna talk more about that water because many researchers and scholars say that that water layer does not exist today. And there is a reason why they give that. There is a form of layer. We can call that as a water vapor. There is water in the sky. You know, you look at the clouds, they are... They carry water content. There is water in there. But the kind of water that is spoken about in Genesis, many scholars say that it was destroyed during the flood. And we're gonna see how that happened. Okay? So, I'll go into that quickly, but I hope you've understood the explanation so far. So, the earth was just a watery mass. There was no land. And God creates an expanse, a space, divides the water that's on the earth and divides the water and separates it and takes another water body to the sky. Divides water from the water. So, the Bible says that He made an expanse around the earth, and this is separated by the water under the expanse and water above it. What this tells us is that when God created the earth, He created the earth with a vapor blanket, with a vapor blanket. Now, many researchers say that such a vapor blanket would change the ecology of the earth. Henry Morris suggests that there are several effects to this water blanket that was around the earth. First of all, a water vapor like this or a water blanket like this will serve as a global greenhouse. Basically, what that means is that because of that water layer around the earth, the earth will have a uniform temperature no matter where you go. If you remember the last week's session, I was sharing with you that the world that existed, the kind of earth that existed before the flood was very different from what it is today. And one of the major reasons is because there was a vapor blanket around the earth. So, now, when you see the earth, you picture the land, the continents, and the water mass, right? So, picture that with a layer of water surrounding it. Picture that with a layer of water surrounding it. How would it be? Just imagine that. What scientists say is that if there was such a layer, then the temperature of the earth or the climate of the earth will be very different from what it is today. In other words, the climate will be such that it'll be a very controlled temperature. It'll be a very pleasant place to live. In other words, you know, I remember Bangalore years ago. Now Bangalore is very different. Years ago, Bangalore had almost uniform temperature throughout the year. Throughout the year, it was quite pleasant. It was quite nice to live. It was a place that many who retired would love to live. But now, it's very different because of all the advancements that have happened, development that has happened. It's very different. Earth was in a similar condition. It was a very beautiful place, a very pleasant climate, and there was same temperature all over the world. And also, with this vapor blanket around the earth, there would not be any significant winds. And there was also no water or rain cycle like what we have today. In other words, up until the time of Noah, there was no rain on the land. There was no rain on the land because there was no significant wind. There was no wind blowing, and water rain cycle could not be formed. And there was no rain in the earth that was initially created. It was only after the time of Noah, only after the time of Noah, there was rain that began pouring on the earth. So, when Noah was preaching, saying that repent or as God is gonna send a rain and it's gonna cause a great flood, people would have laughed at him because none of them had witnessed rain up until that time because the earth was a very beautiful place to live. Now, you may wonder, so if there is no rain, how do the crops get their water? How was the... How do the crops and the vegetation get their water? The earth was a different place, such a different place where the water would come out of the earth and water the plants. Water would come out of the earth and water the plants. So, if you were to plant a crop, if you wanted to do some gardening, you didn't even have to pour water. You know why? Because water will come out from the earth and water the plants. That's how beautiful earth was. It was such a beautiful place to live. And today, you may complain about it. And it is all because of the effects of sin, all because of the effects of sin. And another advantage of a water blanket around the earth, a water vapor blanket around the earth is that the earth will have a tropical-like vegetation all over the world. So, some places we travel to, we see green, greenery, and it looks so beautiful. There's some places we travel to, it looks bone-dry. And we don't like to be in a place like that. We like to visit a place where it's lush green. It just looks beautiful. It just makes us happy. The kind of environment that God created in the earth suggests that the earth all over, all over the world, had a lush, tropical, green-like vegetation all over. So, there was no dry ground as such in the earth. And because of the water blanket, there was a rich evaporation and condensation cycle resulting in heavy dew or ground fog. That is how the earth was watered all over. Another advantage of the vapor blanket is that it'll filter out ultraviolet radiation, cosmic rays, and destructive energies that are bombarding the planet. If you study about the space, if you study about the universe and the planets, you'll understand there are constantly objects falling from other planets or meteorite traveling. There are harmful rays coming through the atmosphere. But when the vapor blanket existed around the earth, a tropical blanket existed around the earth, the earth would be protected from harmful UV radiation, cosmic rays, and other destructive energies. And, you know, all of these energies will be filtered out. All of these radiations will be filtered out. And because of that, humans will live for a much longer period of time, much longer period of time. And that is why we see Adam lived for a very long period of time. We see that people in the first generation, first few generations, lived for a very long period of time. And it came down, it came down to a certain span of time. But you see, in the early stages of creation, human beings lived for much longer period of time because the climate was so good that their bodies would not degenerate like it does today. Even there would not be much sickness. I'll probably talk more about the weather a little later, but I just wanna say this. The kind of weather that the earth had at that point in time was so good that even if you were hurt by something, you would be healed almost instantaneously. You would be healed very quickly. You didn't have to wait for a very long period of time, but the kind of environment that was on this earth would heal the wounds of a person much more easily. And also, the oxygen levels in the earth at that point in time were much higher than what it is today. Many years ago, scientists discovered an amber. Amber is basically a tree sap, and it's like the gum that comes out of the tree. They found an amber with a bee... with an insect stuck inside that. And the amber also traps air bubbles. And so, what researchers did is that they took this amber, took it to a lab, and they tested the oxygen level in that amber. They tested the oxygen level in that amber, and they found out that the oxygen level in the amber was much more rich and strong compared to the present oxygen level on the earth, on the earth. So, researchers concluded like this, saying that the kind of oxygen that people breathed at that time was much more healthy for them than what it is today. In other words, just breathing in oxygen will be a lot of fun. And the kind of oxygen that people breathed in will also help them run for a long distance and never get tired. Okay? So, you don't... You didn't need a transport. You didn't need a car. You can run for hundred kilometers and never be tired. That is how the earth was because the climate was so good. The oxygen was so rich that you can live a very healthy life. You can go around wherever you wanna go, but you'll never run out of stamina or any sort of strength in your body. You know, today, we talk about walking for a few kilometers. Within less than a kilometer, we can start, you know, we'll start catching up with you. You know, we'll start, you know, breathing very hard. But back in the day, when God created the earth, the earth had such good environment. The oxygen levels were so good that people didn't have to even apply medicine or anything for their bodies or they can... They can run as fast as they want, but they'll never become... They'll never become tired. That is how good the earth was. Now, just imagine, what if we lived in a place like that? What if we lived in a place like... That would be paradise. That would be paradise. The beauty of the book of Revelation is that it teaches us that God will restore creation back to its normal state. And one day, when we live with Him, we will experience creation in the way God intended it to be. Intended it, intended it to be. So, such a beautiful place that God created, and it was destroyed because of man's sin and disobedience to Him. I hope that is clear. So, we're talking about the expanse, the separation from waters and the water. So, there was a layer that separated the water from the earth to the water in the sky. And such a water blanket around the earth, around the earth, gave a beautiful weather, a beautiful way to sustain and live. Yes?
I have a question. During the thousand years, will there be a...
Okay, Pradeep is asking a question that during the thousand years of Jesus' reign, will the earth be restored? Trying to remember that verse. Let me get back to you on that at the end of the session. Trying to recall that verse. "New heavens and new earth." Is it in the millennial period or later? I think, I think, if I'm not wrong, it comes much later. Not in the millennial period. It comes a little later. But I'll confirm that at the end of the session. If you have any questions, you can post it on YouTube in the comment section, and we'll take that and answer those questions. So, researchers say that the tropical blanket or the vapor blanket does not exist today. It does not exist today because it changed during the time of Noah. If you turn with me to Genesis, chapter seven, verse eleven. Seven, verse eleven. It says like this, "In the six-hundredth year of Noah's life, the second month, on the seventeenth day of the month, on that day, all the fountains of the great deep burst forth." And pay attention to the last phrase. "The windows of heaven were opened." "The windows of heaven were opened." If you think of the amount of water that filled the earth during Noah's time, many researchers will say that it was huge amount of water, just lots and lots of water. And the only way the earth could go under such a flood is because of a water blanket that existed before the time of Noah. And so, Bible says like this, that the windows of the heavens were opened. The windows of the heavens were open. In other words, the water blanket literally burst, and that caused a great amount of water to be poured out on this earth, and that caused the death of many who choose... who chose not to obey God. So, does the tropical blanket, does the vapor blanket exist today? It does not exist. So, after the time of Noah, after the flood of Noah, everything changed. The climate of the earth changed very drastically. It changed altogether. So, I hope that is clear. Let me read verse eight to you. "God called the expanse heaven, and there was evening, and there was morning, the second day." So, this expanse that separated waters from the waters is the sky. In other words, the word "heaven" is also used. Let's go to day three. Let's go to day three. If you have any questions, please feel free to post them in the comment section. I'll be happy to answer them to you. Let's go to day three. Genesis, chapter one, verse nine to thirteen. Genesis, chapter one, verse nine to thirteen. It says like this, "And God said, 'Let the waters under the heaven be gathered into one place, and let the dry land appear,' and it was so. God called the dry land earth, and the waters that were gathered together, He called seas. And God saw that it was good. And God said, 'Let the earth sprout vegetation, plant yielding seeds, and fruit-bearing trees in which is their seed, each according to its kind on the earth, and it was so. The earth brought forth vegetation, plants, yielding seed according to their own kinds, and trees bearing fruit in which is their seed, each according to its own kind, and God saw it was good. And there was evening, and there was morning, the third day.'" So, here we see the third day of creation. And there is something very interesting for us to know. Verse nine begins like this, saying, "Let the waters under the heavens be gathered together in one place." So, it's talking about the water that was on the earth. So, let's say if you were alive, okay? It was not a possibility. But if at this stage, if you were alive and if you were to see day two of creation, what you would witness is just a mass of water. That's it. You would not see any land. So, if you know swimming, probably you can survive. And if you're someone like me, you need God's help to swim and survive. And the earth was full of water. "And God said, 'Let the waters be gathered into one place, and let the dry land appear.'" I wanted to pay attention to verse nine because it tells us something about the earth. What is God saying? "Let the waters be gathered together in not many places, but one place, and let the dry land appear." Okay? So, at this point, land begins to appear. Land begins to appear, and notice something carefully. God says, "Waters be gathered together in one place." Waters gathered in one place. So, when you look at the geography of our earth now, if you were to look at the earth now, we would see land, water, land, water, land, water. We will see that there is land separated by water. So, you cannot travel to another land easily by road. There are certain ways you can do that, but it's not very easy. You have to cross through the sea. But when God created the earth before the flood, the geography of the earth was very different. In other words, there was one land and one water body. The kind of separation that we see today wasn't there before the flood. The earth was quite different. In other words, they would call this as a supercontinent, just one big landmass, just one huge landmass. Now, I'll talk more about this subject when I get to talking about the flood of Noah. We're gonna talk about what all happened, what are the changes that happened. I'll also talk to you about the dinosaurs and how they became extinct. So, I'll talk more about that when I specifically go into... So I'll talk more about that when I specifically go into the flood of Noah. But what I want you to know here is that the landmass was one. There was no separate, you know, Africa or the United States or everything. It was all one huge landmass. It was all one huge landmass. But now when we look at the geography of the earth, it's very different. It's all broken apart into separate pieces. If you study today about the tectonic plates, you will learn that the landmass is always shifting. So countries are moving apart from each other. Some part of certain countries are being submerged in water, and some lands are reappearing. This is always, it's a process that is happening. So landmass is moving, shifting from one place to another place. Now, we may not see that shift in a few weeks' time, but within a hundred, two hundred, five hundred or a thousand years, you'll see a big difference. So if you study about fault lines, there are fault lines all across the earth, and there are places where a crack will appear. But over a period of time, over twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, it'll become like a huge trench. It'll become like a huge gap. So all that is happening in the earth. The reason it is, is that it's all because of the sin of mankind. Sin of mankind. This is something that we must understand. The way the earth is today, people may complain a lot about the earth, but the way the earth is today is simply because of the effects of man's sin. When God created the earth, he did not create an imperfect one. He created, created a planet way beautiful than what we witness even today. It was a perfect place to live. It was literally a paradise for mankind. But man, out of his own sinful nature, did something against God that brought down God's judgment on the earth. And because of the flood of Noah, because of this great catastrophic flood that came, it shifted the entire geography of the earth, and it made it to be the kind of place it is today. Now you may say, earth is still, still good enough, pastures. Good places to live. Of course, it is good. You know, you go to some beautiful places. There are some, a lot of beautiful things to see. But the kind of earth that existed before, before the flood, was very, very different. Dr. Andrew A. Snelling says like this, "Noah's world looked nothing like the continents today." And he says like this, "With the help of geology, we can put many pieces back together." What he goes on to say is that the world that existed in Noah's day is not what it is today. Many parts of the land was destroyed, and continents were broken up, and they were separated by thousands of miles from each other. And the interesting thing here is that researchers say that in the earth that God created, there were no mountains, no Alps, no Himalayas with snow-covered peaks. There was nothing like that. So in the, in the, in the place, in the earth that God created, there was no mountain. Now we go all across. If I were to travel from Bangalore to, from Mangalore to Bangalore, of course, I'm going to see some hills. I'm going to see some mountains. Recently, we were driving towards Goa. We saw some mountains, absolutely beautiful views, stunning views. We enjoy that, okay? But in the earth that God created, there were no mountains. There were no snow-covered mountains, nothing like that. Everything was just green and a beautiful place to live. The, the earth had a very uniform temperature. But because of what happened during the flood. Now, I want to go back to Genesis seven, eleven, and there is one phrase that we must study, which we will do in the future. In Genesis seven, eleven, it says like this, "In the six-hundredth year of Noah's life, in the second month, on the seventeenth day of the month, on that day, all the fountains of the great deep burst forth." Now, if you have a pen with you, underline that phrase. "On that day, all the fountains of the great deep burst forth." All the fountains of the great deep burst forth. Now, we may read this as something simple, something simple. But when God allowed the earth to be flooded, the fountains of the great deep literally burst forth. And it was, it was as if, you know, you're holding tons and tons of water under great pressure, and you open the valve, release it, and instead of water gushing out, it just bursts forth. Okay, it just literally bursts forth. And scientists also say that the, the, the way the earth burst is that it would have sent land pieces, rocks or something, flying to hundreds of kilometers into the space. Hundreds of kilometers into the space. So now if you look at the moon, the moon has a lot of rocks. The moon has a lot of rocks and all of that. And, and many researchers say that it could be an effect of the flood because it would have caused so much of changes on the land when the great deep burst forth, that rocks would be thrown out from the earth all over, and it dispersed into many other places and settled down. Okay, so that is what researchers also say. So when we read the Bible and it says, "The fountains of the great deep burst forth," it means a very catastrophic event. See, there is a reason why God said, "I will never destroy the earth with flood again." There is a reason because it literally changed. Because, you know, the kind of flood that we witnessed today, what we saw, witnessed in Chennai some years ago, or, or in Bihar, I believe. You know, I don't know if it was in Bihar, some, some place, very catastrophic floods. They are nothing compared to what actually happened during the time of Noah. The what happened during the time of Noah literally split apart the earth, the landmass, and made it into what it is today. So the earth is not the same. It was highly damaged. That's the way to put it. I read today that geologists are conducting research on this subject about the landmass of the earth, and they have, they have found a very, they found very promising clues that point out to this evidence that the landmass was one piece, one giant piece. So this gives us also an explanation because some will talk about Noah's flood, and they'll say, okay, if Noah really got all the animals on the ark, how did animals from different countries travel to Noah's ark? How did animals like kangaroo from Australia travel to where Noah was? How, how is that possible? You know, in the world that was before the time of Noah, would have been possible because everything was just one huge landmass. There were no sea separating one land from another. So this is an ongoing work, and it's better not to comment too much on it. But I'm excited to know more about this, and soon we will have information. And, and we will do a study on the flood of Noah. We will surely do a study on the flood of Noah. I cannot promise that soon because there's a lot to unpack about the flood of Noah. But maybe by mid of this year, or even next month, you can do a study on the flood of Noah. That'll help us understand how the earth changed after this catastrophic event. So every time we see the rainbow, we should be reminded of God's great mercies. We should be reminded of God's great mercy. That he spared a few human beings and let them live and populate the earth once again. Some will ask this question, was Noah's flood a global flood or just a flood concentrated in that region? It is a global flood. It is a global flood that was all over the earth, every part of the earth. Okay, so let's go to the, let's continue to talk about it, about day three of creation. Verse ten says like this, "God called the dry land earth, and the waters were gathered together he called seas. And God saw that it was good. And then God said, 'Let the earth sprout vegetation, plants, yielding seed, and fruit trees bearing fruit, which is their seed, each according to its own kind on the earth, and it was so. The earth brought forth vegetation, plant yielding seeds, according to their own kinds, tree bearing fruit in which is their seed, according to its kind, and God saw that it was good.'" So in day three, grass, trees, and land appear. What appears? Grass, trees, and land appear. And interestingly, all of this appear before the, before the, what is a vital source of energy for plants? Sun. And God creates grass, trees, and he makes land appear before even the sun comes into existence. Which means that when this, when the, when the grass, trees, and land appeared, the, the light that God created gave enough nourishment to help them grow. Help them grow. Now some will say that, no, no, the problem, the thing is that God already created the sun and the moon and all the heavenly bodies, but it was not revealed to us till much later. No, that's not true. God created sun, moon, and all the heavenly bodies after this, not before this. He's demonstrating because if you put sun first, what will happen is people will start to worship the sun. Say, oh, this was the first created thing, and it is the God for us because it gives us energy. But God does not want people to make idols out of his own creations. Rather, he wants them to understand that he is the creator, that he can work in ways beyond what they can understand. So he creates land, trees, grass without the sun because there was a light that he created that already gave enough nutrition and nourishment to the plants. And then it goes on to say, "According to its kind." If you read verse eleven and twelve, it'll say, "Fruit-bearing trees, fruit in which is their seed, each according to its kind." Now, in the first chapter, you will see this phrase, "According to its kind, according to its kind." What does that mean? It basically means variations. If you look at a dog, there are so many different kind of breeds, so many different kind of breeds. And so there are, there were variations also that God created. God created. So many varieties of plants. If you look at mangoes, there are different kinds of mangoes. There are different kinds of, sizes of mangoes differ. All of this was created by God. All the varieties of the plant was also created by God. Verse twelve, if you read in some translation, it'll say like this, "Let the earth bring forth every herb that yields seeds." Herbs that yield seed according to its kind, to its kind. The word herbs is used. Now some will use this to justify that God created the, the weed. God created weed. You know, I've had people ask me this question. So what is wrong in taking weed? Because who created it? God created it. So certainly, you know, God created it, but not every herb is good for every purpose. Some herbs are good, but it's not for human consumption. In fact, the use of drugs is nowhere approved. In the Bible, it's always condemned. Use of drugs is always often associated with sorcery and the occult. So we should not justify saying, nobody should justify saying, "God created the herb, so we can take some weed and enjoy life." No, no, that's not the way. He creates certain things, and not everything is for our consumption. Not everything is for our consumption. All right, let's go to day four. Very quickly, I want to cover this, day four and day five. I have about ten minutes, and I, and I do believe that you're following along. Genesis, chapter one, verse fourteen to nineteen. Genesis one, fourteen to nineteen. "And God said, 'Let there be lights in the expanse of the heavens to separate the day from the night, and let them be for signs and for seasons and for days and years. And let them be lights in the expanse of the heavens to give light upon the earth, and it was so.'" Verse sixteen, "And God made two great lights, the greater light to rule the day and lesser light to rule the night, and the stars." Now, the greater light is the sun, and the lesser light is the moon. God created those on day four. And verse seventeen, "God set them in the expanse of the sky." Again, we see the word expanse. It means the heavens, the sky. So when you look up, what you see is the expanse. And God has placed the sun and the moon, stars, all the heavenly bodies in that expanse. Verse eighteen, "To rule over the day and over the night, and to separate light from the darkness, and God saw that it was good." Now first, you may wonder, why didn't the writer mention the word sun? He just mentions as the greater light and the lesser light. Why, why isn't the writer saying the word sun or the word moon? The Hebrew word that was used here for sun is the word, the Hebrew, Hebrew word for sun is the word semesh, and the word for moon is yarak. Semesh and yarak. There is a reason why the writer, Moses, deliberately avoids mentioning the word sun and moon. He avoids it because back in the day, there were gods in the name of the sun. There were gods in the name of the moon. So writing that down in the Bible may make a reference to those gods that the people were worshipping, worshipping at that time. So Moses deliberately avoids the word sun because there was a god called semesh. And also there was a god named after the moon, yarak, in Hebrew. So he avoids usage of the word sun and moon just to, you know, make no connection to those deities. He wanted to avoid that as much as possible. And that is why he avoids using the name sun and moon. But in day four, we see God does create the sun and creates the moon. Sun to rule over the day, and the moon to rule over the night, and to separate light from the darkness, and God saw that it was good. Our God is a God of wisdom. He knows what to create and how to create it. If God had put moon or sun on the first day of creation, many people would have been even more happier. But he doesn't do that. He reminds them over and over again that it's not the creation, but it's the creator that needs to be worshipped. Day five of creation, this is the last one I'm going to share for this evening. Please follow along. Genesis, chapter one, verse twenty to twenty-three. Genesis one, twenty to twenty-three. "And God said, 'Let the waters swarm with swarms of living creatures, and let birds fly above the earth across the expanse of the sky.'" "And so God created the great sea creatures, every living creature that moves with which the waters swarm, according to their kinds. Every winged bird according to its kind, and God saw that it was good." And God blessed them, saying, "Be fruitful and multiply. Fill their waters in the seas, and let birds multiply on the earth." "And there was evening and there was morning the fifth day." On the fifth day of creation, we see that God creates the creatures of the sea and of the sky. We see great variety of birds and sea creatures were created at this time. And these creatures were not evolving over millions of years. God said, and there was fish in the sea. God said, there were birds in the sky. Many will say that, no, 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 they slowly evolved over millions and millions of years. It's not true. "God said, 'Fish was created in the sea, and birds came alive, and they began to fly in the sky.'" I noticed this carefully. Verse twenty says, "Let the waters swarm with swarms of living creatures." Okay, and then it says, "Let the birds fly above the earth across the expanse of the sky." So where did the birds come from? They come out of the water. The birds, where do they come out from? They come out of the water. So God says, "Let the waters swarm with swarms of living creatures, and let the birds fly across the expanse of the sky." And also God created great sea creature with living creature that moves with which the waters swarm. So God created birds out of, out of water. You may wonder, how is that possible? You know, there, there are a lot of birds that can swim in the water. A lot of birds that can swim in the water. In fact, some birds will swim, go inside the water to catch its prey. God knows why and how to create every creature. Again, the verse says that it was created according to its kind. So varieties of the same kind of bird were created also by God. Now, evolutionists will use the phrase, "According to its own kind," and say that you see a dog, and you see a different variety of dog, that's evolution. They will say that is micro-evolution. But that's not evolution in the sense of what But that's not evolution in the sense of what evolution talks about, because evolution is basically talking about evolving from one kind of species to another kind of species. It's like uh, uh, an ape evolving into a man. That is what evolution talks about. But sometimes, they will use this phrase, "according to its own kind," to say that it was something where God is saying, you know, "according to its own kind." That means one species is evolving to another. When you see a mango, an Alphonso mango or some different kind of mango, it's not a different species, it's not a different kind of entity altogether. Or if you see a dog, uh, there's a German shepherd dog, and what are the other dogs? I don't like dogs, so, I'm not a huge fan of dogs. Please feel, I'm sorry if that offended you, but I'm not a dog person. Uh, there are different varieties of dogs. And no one can say that, no one can look at one variety of dog to another variety of dog and say that different kind of species, no. They are dogs, they are the same species, but they are different varieties, different varieties. Evolutionists will claim that that is evolution, that's not evolution. That's not evolution at all in any way. In fact, I was, I was reading this today, that one of the greatest opposition that Darwin faced when he brought about his theory of evolution was, uh, one of the greatest opponents were not people from the church, or were not Christians, but people who were fossil experts. In other words, they're called as the paleontologists. These were people who study fossils, and they are, you know, looking to see what kind of animal this could be, or what kind of life this could be. And one of Darwin's, Darwin's strongest opposition was from the fossil experts. Because many paleontologists will agree and will say that, that they've never found a fossil of a, of a crocodile changing into another animal. Whatever they found was of the same animal. They've never found bones of an animal that was in the transition phase. Whatever they saw was the same as whatever animal that is today. So there was no such evolution. There was, they did not find bones of a monkey or an ape evolving into a man. They never found anything like that. So paleontologists, fossil experts are one of greatest, Darwin's greatest o- oppositions. They opposed the kind of theories that Darwin brought. And another thing that paleontologists or fossil experts say that is that the, the kind of theory that it took millions and millions of years to appear on the earth is not true. Because when you study the fossils, it's very clear that these are fossils that appeared suddenly on the earth. They do not appear over a period of time, but these are fossils that appeared suddenly on the earth. And that makes sense, because when the Bible talks about creation, when God says, "Let trees appear," that means trees of big size appeared instantaneously. God did not say, "Let trees appear and wait there. Please grow, after that I'll do the next thing." He didn't do that. He, He spoke, and trees as tall as a hundred-story building came into existence. Trees as tall as a twenty-story building came into existence. Plants immediately sprung into existence. And you know, all these fruit-bearing trees immediately came into existence. It was almost as if you can go and eat the fruit then and there. It was, it was like that, that is how the earth was, it was that way. So, it was never like an evolution. And paleontologists and fossil experts would agree with that. But over time, fossil experts themselves say that we have given into the idea of evolution. Given into the idea of evolution. But there is no document, this is what uh, someone said, I forgot, I missed their name. They say, "The fossil record does not convincingly document a single transition from one species to another." In other words, they haven't found any evidence so far to say that there was a transition from one kind, from an ape to a man in any way. There was no such transition, no such evolution at all. Evolutionist Niall Eldridge said like this, "We paleontologists have said that the history of life supports evolution, all the while knowing that it does not." Interesting, what do they say? "We have supported evolution, all the while knowing that evolution does not exist. There is no such thing as evolution." So fossil record totally rejects the idea of millions of tiny changes. But rather, they attribute to quick leaps and miraculous power to create what they witness. When you study evolution, what you can understand is that, and this is something a bit sad, it takes more faith to believe in evolution than in God. Frank Turek said like, wrote a book like this, saying, "I don't have enough faith to be an atheist." You'll find this very interesting, that to be an atheist, to believe in evolution, to believe in the Big Bang Theory takes a lot more faith, because it's just a theory. It's not proven in any way. Their own people will themselves say that this is not true. It's just a system, atheism, evolution, evolutionism, all of that. It's just a system that does not want God in the picture, that just wants to highlight man. Just wants to glorify science. Science is nothing without God. Whatever God does is what is studied by scientists, becomes science. So, it takes a lot of faith to believe in evolutionism. It takes a lot of faith to believe in atheism, or to believe in an earth that was created without God's intervention. None of us are here by chance. See, if you believe in evolutionism or believe in atheism, it's basically a theory that suggests that we are just people who came from a rock or evolved from an ape. Which, which tells us that none of us have any value. You know, what value does a rock have, unless it's, you know, it's unprecious metal? It does not have much of value. And if we were to say that, oh, we evolved from some, some rocks like that, that, that rained over on it for thousands and millions of years, and we evolved into life. That's not true. When we look at the Bible, what we see is that God created us. Psalmist says like this in Psalm one thirty-nine, "That you saw my unformed body, that you know, you knew my inmost being." He knew every part of us, God created each one of us, and that gives us a very high value that tells us that we are precious to Him. But believing in evolutionism, atheism, that says that we are here by chance makes us nothing than just a bunch of chemicals, a bunch of materials. So, as we think about the book of Genesis, we have to think of what we believe and how strong our belief is. Because sometimes, we can get carried away by the arguments of evolutionism. But let me tell you this, no matter how strong their arguments are, it is just a theory. There are no facts, no scientific proofs to prove what they believe. Sometimes, they'll use things like carbon dating to say that, "Oh, this part of this animal's bone is about a billion years old." How do they know it's a billion years old? Did they exist, or did they receive some special information? None of them know, they just speculate. They just guess that it does happen over a period of years, and just give a date. The reality is, is that it is not. Paleontologists or fossil experts clearly say that the fossils we see today is a clear indication that life appeared all of a sudden on this earth. And I want you to know that it is God's creative work that brought each one of us and everything that we see, everything that we see into existence. And the glory for all that belongs to God and God alone, and may His name be glorified forever. Amen? With this, I would like to close this session, and I hope this was something that helped you today. Uh, we are beyond our times, I'm not gonna take, uh, give time for questions. But if you have any questions, please write them down, and I will answer that in the next session, answer that in the next session. So, thank you for joining us, before we close, let's say a word of prayer. Father, we wanna thank you for who you are and for all that you are doing in our midst. We pray that you enrich us continually with the knowledge of your word. Help us to walk by your word day after day. Help us to live according to your word, and help us to be a Christian that bears fruit of God. Help us, Lord, we pray. We thank you for your presence and your help in our life. We give you the glory and the honor, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen, amen, amen. God bless you, God bless.